May I have a motion to approve the agenda or any changes that want to be made to the agenda?
Yes, I would move that we take public comments on items 1C3 and 1C4.
I will second the motion, but I'd like to hear a little background. I'm caught off guard that it hasn't been done in the past, but I feel I've heard from other people that it has. So I'm a little confused on that, to be honest.
Yeah, this is awkward. I'm gonna say, as everyone knows, as a general matter, I favor more public input over less. And I always favor following the law. So if the law requires public comment on this, I think that's, we ought to, we need to follow the law. If it's not required, though, contrary to my desire to have more public input than less, I just want to say the following thing, which is, there wasn't public comment on December 14, 2020, when city council broke the tradition of appointing, appointing as mayor pro temp the newly elected member who received the most votes in the election. None. There was no public comment on April 26, 2021, the last time we appointed mayor and mayor pro temp. And in fact, prior to that meeting, I wrote to the city clerk and the now former city manager. And I asked, why is there no public comment on these matters? Because I know a lot of people want to comment. I was told, it's just not done, ceremonial, just as John just recited a few moments ago. It just seems wrong to me to be making changes on the fly. I mean, if we've done it unlawfully, we need to change it. That's, that's, but if it's a matter of policy, I think we need to make that policy decision in a more relaxed manner, not on the evening that the issue arises.
And that takes this, I believe, to item 1C3, election of the mayor. And at this point, I guess I have to open the comments.
Mayor Grisanti, since there is going to be public comment on this item before that, we should hear from the speakers if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Here I am. Guys, 2,414 people voted for Bruce to do what he has done. Maybe he talks too much. I don't know. So do I. However, you don't like him, obviously, you made it look like you hated him. And I'm talking about the three of you, Karen, Mikey, and Paul. Your behavior December 13th was reprehensible, especially since you knew that he'd already been exonerated on the gender bias claim that just was uncalled for. I don't care if you like him or not, there's 2,414 of us that voted for him. I took it personally when you jobbed him in December of 2020. There was no reason for that. You had jobbed him again in April of 2021. You got a chance to do it right. Do not do it for Bruce. Do it for us. More of us voted for him than for any other council candidate. It's our turn. At least the right guy will be there representing us. Put Bruce where he should have been back a year and a half ago, two years ago, whatever it was, December 2020. Make it right, not for him, make it right for me and 2,413 other voters. It'll also be right for the citizens. He truly believes he represents us all. He isn't here to rule. He's here to govern. There's a huge difference. Thank you.
Are you available, Mr. Embry?
Good evening. I wanted to say thank you for, why I hope will be the respect for the office that you hold and the city's process to properly institute the high vote getter in the role of mayor pro temp. You already reneged on that once. And so we've seen as a city, and I've attended so many meetings in this city, you're not always gonna quote, "agree," or you're trying to make him behave. No, that's called to get behind me and do as I say. That's never gonna happen. It never has happened in Malibu that way. So I'm, I'm very disappointed that I think we're going to hear from a lot of folks who want to throw the first stones tonight, make the ad hominem attacks or bring up innuendo and character assassination, as was done just back in December. And this is from some people who ran against Bruce and lost in the election. But, you know, it is what it is and we'll expect it. What's most important, though, is look at Bruce, what he's done. He's been available. He showed up to the meetings. He's a critical thinker. He's made correct analyses and decisions. And some of these have been important and very detailed things like development in Malibu. And someone just said he was like overly communicative. Well, you know what? Some of the council members in the past, they were just unavailable. They were not interested, so forth. So I think it's a breath of fresh air and definitely transparent. So I don't know what you could want more in a mayor for the city of Malibu than someone who has already exhibited and demonstrated fitness for the position by the work that's been happening for the last year. So thank you, Bruce. We look forward to you serving as mayor. I appreciate it.
Mr. Ayd, are you available?
We'll donate the three minutes and then I'll get the second three minutes.
I believe he had a video to play during his three minutes. Is that what you mean, Rosemary?
Correct.
Hearing from a city where the majority appear to be tired of this BS. I agree. I'm exhausted by it. We have real work to do. In my opinion, if you had a true sense, Bruce, of self-introspection on the damage you've done, you would behave with far more character. I suspect you won't. And this whole chapter in our city's history has just been a divisive, destructive, expensive and toxic giant waste of time. When we have real issues we should be focusing on.
To use your talents to destroy the city is a real shame for the constituents and the staff. In the ideal world, you would have the decency to resign. But this is the real world, and I don't think you'll do that. It's up to the people of Malibu to decide what should happen. So now hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars have been squandered. And for what? So that Bruce Silverstein could declare that the city had a clean bill of health? What's next? The search for Bigfoot?
I'm surprised that anybody took anything seriously in that, in that affidavit. Because as I told people, there was, with the buildup before I read it, I'm very disappointed that, you know, your attacks on Riva have resulted in her leaving.
Go find a single time before or after the election that I stated that I believed that the city manager had committed a crime or was corrupt. Find a single instance in which I said-
All of us voted to hire the law firm to do the study of the affidavit. And now half of us are sitting back saying, not me. I knew anything about that. We all did. For me, the most disappointing part of this report, I, you know, I bet, Mikey, you and I were in the planning commission for years. I thought we worked reasonably well together. We didn't agree on everything, okay? But I don't even remember us calling each other names. Okay? And, you know, look, I'm a big boy. I haven't called names before, so I'm not gonna, you know, lose any sleep over it. But this process, it says, you know, we wanna, I'm back to this conversation we had in January when Bruce was trying to, was gonna be mayor pro temp. We gotta learn how to, you can't attack each other. That's what they're doing in the national level.
You want to relitigate the election? Give me a break. Elections, someone said, oh, it was Drew, I believe, about consequences. Well, elections have consequences. The people of the city spoke. I'm now here. I'm trying to do my job. And you just all want to continue to fight and pick? Fine. Paul, would it be possible to pause this for a moment?
I'd be delighted to, if I could.
Parker, if you could pause the video, that was the end of Jared's time. I believe Rosemary might want to play the rest of the video using her time.
Could I just speak for one moment?
I think that'd be appropriate, Bruce.
I've, thank you, Paul. I've previously asked the people who support me to please not do this. And I'm going to ask you once again, please reconsider what you're going to do tonight. If you want to speak in my behalf, great. I welcome that. But there's no need to be speaking against others. Let's, let's, let's speak for who we believe in and not speak against the people we don't believe in.
And the next speaker is Rosemary. Rosemary, I'm asking you to unmute. Let us know if you'd like to play the rest of that video using your time.
Yes, I would like to. Please stand up for your constituents. Set the record straight. Stop the cover-ups and attacks. And elect Mr. Silverstein to his rightful position of mayor. This is the only way the city and council can proceed in a united, positive way. Stop the divisiveness and get the work done needed for residents, in particular within the planning department. Bruce will be an asset to guiding, guiding the council to follow Malibu's vision and mission statement, which protects all residents and the environment we live in. And I hope you all do.
Hi, Joe, are you available?
Hi, yes. Honorable City Council, now that all required for the Silverstein investigation is out, it is clear that this investigation was not for any necessary legal reasons with regards to Ms. Feldman's allegations, but to try and put Mr. Silverstein in a bad light. The council was advised of Mr. Cotty's and several other councils' opinion that the Canada letter did not allege facts that would support a claim of gender-based discrimination. Also, that the disparaging comments and harassment allegations attributed to council member Silverstein, among other actions alleged, did not meet the standards for legal harassment. It was well-known by the people who voted for Mr. Silverstein that he understood Ms. Feldman to not be doing her job, and their email interactions proved it to be so. This council was advised as to potential defenses available to the city should litigation arise from Ms. Feldman's allegations, including filing an anti-slap motion and that she would have to waive severance or reputational damage in the long time it takes to prosecute an action through the courts. These should have been considered, rather than the huge payoff she received rewarding her for bad conduct and false allegations. It is clear from this investigation that the only axe Mr. Silverstein had to grind on behalf of the people who voted for him was with Ms. Feldman and no other female or male staff member. He treated everyone else on staff with the utmost of respect and courtesy. We did not need an over $31,000 investigation, especially knowing that our city attorneys advised the city council that allegations were false. This was a complete waste of taxpayers' time and money and just a smear campaign against Mr. Silverstein, who only conducts himself to get answers to make the city accountable, which is his duty as an elected official. The investigation also misrepresents that there was a small anti-Mrs. Feldman residence group. Apparently, one of you council members surmised that this group recruited Mr. Silverstein to help them get rid of Ms. Feldman. However, there is not only a petition of over 4,100 Malibu residents' signatures demanding her resignation, but also video of the whole room booing her at the community meeting in council chambers after the Woolsey fire. So indeed, the investigations miss this fact. It also states that Bruce started his conflict when he felt Riva did not listen to residents concerning or concerned or represent the city well after having a field near City Hall paved over in concrete back in 2019. As stated by another resident, "We have solid proof that legal counsel was pushed aside for personal interests and protect the contract who encouraged paving paradise." "These were options listed that would have saved us considerable monies, reduced the collective anger in the community, as sides drew lines and a narrative was carefully crafted despite full knowledge that it was false. This Valentine's Day, show the majority of your constituents your hearts. Get past your negative feelings, set the record straight, and elect Mr. Silverstein to his rightful position as mayor." "This is the only way the city and council can proceed in a united, positive fashion and get the work done, in particular within the planning department in upholding the vision and mission statement. Thank you."
Hi, Lonnie, are you available?
So I suggest that we all take a nice, deep breath to clear the air because there's a lot of vitriol going on here. And mine is short. I respectfully request that there be no further denial by the council that the rightful process to appoint the mayor pro temp, Bruce Silverstein, be implemented tonight. He's shown he's more than capable for this position. And I also want to appreciate the fact that you, Mayor Grisanti, stepped up at a time when we needed you for the state on our 5G issues and helped us out at the last minute. That was more than appreciated, and so many people said you did such a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Hello, Mr. Patterson, are you available?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Good evening, Council. As we approach the election of a new mayor this evening, I would like to point out to council, in case you have forgotten, Bruce Silverstein was elected to the city council by 2,400-plus residents of our city. He received more votes than any other candidate for the position in the 2020 election. Bruce ran on a platform, which, among other things, promised to be tough on the then-city manager Riva Feldman and to try and dispel rumors and/or prove or disprove allegations of corruption within our city government. Bruce has delivered on what he promised, and I'm confident that a majority of the residents who voted for him appreciate what he has accomplished thus far in his term, despite the constant attacks on his character, attempts to discredit him and even remove him from office by other city council members. The past several months of vitriol, false insinuations, and outright lies used by some members of council that discouraged Bruce, all while knowing that he had been found innocent of what he had been falsely accused of by Riva Feldman is shameful. I would not doubt that there will yet again, be yet again, another attempt to deny Bruce his rightful place as Malibu's mayor this evening by three out of five council members. Your actions are predictable, deceitful, and in direct contrast to what 2,400-plus residents of Malibu voted for. Please do what is right for the city. Vote Bruce as mayor and stop your petty political games. We see you. We know what you're doing, and we don't like it. In the spirit of transparency, I can tell you that as a resident of Malibu, I'm constantly disappointed by the continued attacks on council person Silverstein, by the council majority, as well as the majority's negligence in defending and upholding Malibu's mission and vision statements. As a voter, I can promise you that I will do all I can to correct this in the year's upcoming election. And finally, to paraphrase and use the words of a couple of our council members from a few weeks back, "As our nation faces an unprecedented attack on democracy itself, how can we expect our children to understand and embrace the principles of transparency, accountability, and the right to a fair process when we stand by as a city council majority could consider trampling on these principles of fairness?" Thank you and good night.
George, are you available?
Yes, thank you. I strongly urge you to follow protocol and vote for council members Silverstein as mayor and Steve Euring as mayor pro temp, as has, to my knowledge, always been done. They are eminently qualified and have been articulate and fair members of the council, as well as representing the majority of the voters in Malibu. It is well past time to put any conflicted personal differences behind us. Please, let us move forward in a respectful and collaborative mode. There are many critical problems, many, to address in Malibu. We must not let our personal differences interfere with our duties as citizens and your responsibilities as our elected representatives. Please elect council member Silverstein as mayor and Steve Euring as mayor pro temp. Thank you for your consideration for Malibu.
Many years ago, as a student at the University of Michigan, I took my first class in political science. The professor was George Peake, and he said, and I never forgot it, "A sign of a healthy democracy is that all sides can live with losing. A sign of democracy in danger is that large numbers of people can't live with losing." I thought about this at that time as a partisan ideological question. Democrats and Republicans can't be so far apart that one side can't live with the other winning. But years later, as I became the director of Common Cause in California, I saw this more as a matter of process than partisan ideology. If people don't believe the process is fair, people can't live with losing. And they can't, and democracy suffers. I fear a touch of that is going on before us today. Precedent protocol suggests one thing, that Bruce Silverstein be elected mayor. But some of you may feel that the rules of precedent can be ignored or bent to make something else happen. We have enough of this in our national politics today. If it happens, we would be sending our own message that precedent and process can be changed whenever you have the votes. Lower levels of public confidence in systems and processes in Malibu will be one certain result. Living with losing will become a lot harder. Thank you.
Hi, John, are you available?
Okay, I think we can all see where this is going. Everybody on the pro-development side is saying, oh, don't elect Bruce, elect Steve, knowing full well that Steve has the integrity not to take the job. So one of you three is gonna elect yourselves. Now, I think you want to look at the way the national politics is going. Everybody's anti-Trumpian, there's fake news, this and that. But what have you done? The first action you took was to take the clear winner of the election and deny the mayorship to them. Then you came up with a Tuesday afternoon attempt to get rid of this council policies. Fortunately, the citizens stopped you. But that was a takeover. That was a coup. Then you invented, you had this report on Bruce's actions, which you knew in July was before you voted to pay Riva. You knew he had been exonerated. And then you paid Riva $300,000 to leave when it was unnecessary and blamed Bruce for it. When your council told you, she had no claim in her letter. Then you came in in December 13th and lied through your teeth about what happened and attacked Bruce. Most of your speakers say, oh, Bruce's, Bruce attacked this, attacked that. Go look at that meeting on December 13th. You attacked Bruce and you lied. And everybody knows it, and it's there to see as long as we're a city. So what should happen? Okay, the voters voted overwhelmingly for Steve and Bruce. We have an election in November. Hopefully, power will change. If we follow the supposed Trumpian policies, you may not accept that. But it will happen. So what should they do, the new city council? Should they have a February 14th investigation and have Bruce and Steve run it? Just like the Democrats are doing now? Should, should we have a city that follows democracy? Or should we listen to all the pro-development toadies that come up here and say, oh, Bruce is terrible and you guys are wonderful? No, we should follow democracy. This is our town, not your town. And we need to straighten it out and get back to normal and have you quit attacking each other, especially the three of you who use lies and city funds to do it. And bring us back to normalcy and fix some of the problems the city have, which are tremendous. Thank you.
Hi, Scott, are you available?
Thank you, Paul. So I guess we're rehashing the last election, and I find this really unfortunate because as a number of people have mentioned on both sides, we have a lot of problems in this city. For example, they want to declare a new mean high tide, which will get rid of all our beach houses. That's not good. MRCA wants to take over the canyons on private roads, on and on and on, homeless, pirates. If we're divided, we're not going to be able to solve these problems. Bruce and Steve, but Bruce particularly ran on a platform of getting rid of Riva and getting rid of Christie Hogan, the city attorney. Now, some people love Riva. That's okay. But that was Bruce's platform, and he ran on it. And then he proceeded to do it. And what did Riva do? Riva fought everything he tried to do in requesting legitimate information. That was wrong, and it got ugly. Okay, we all saw that. So what happens next? Oh, people want to cancel Bruce. This is cancel culture. Do we want this in Malibu? Or do we want to allow those 2,400 people who voted for him to see democracy in action and see him as mayor? 4,000 people signed a petition, I was one, to get rid of Riva. Why? I'll give you two examples. Because I want to make it really clear why she needed to go. We spent five years at our neighborhood to underground utilities. Riva, at the end of five years, said, oh, you cannot do an assessment district that made it feasible for us to do this. That was a complete lie. She said, you have to do a community development district. And that was just ridiculous. Why? Because suddenly, the assessment engineer that it took five years to get and we paid for out of our pocket said, oh, there's a public component. If in fact, you do get rid of these poles, because it's gonna save in terms of fire danger. And Riva didn't want to spend any money on this. It was her agenda. She had her own agendas. And last, Riva, oh, she cost the city $3 million when we bought City Hall. Because she completely blew it. I won't go into the details. But we need, if we're going to be anything credible, to elect Bruce as mayor and Steve as mayor pro temp. Thank you.
Louis, are you available?
Oh, yeah. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, yeah. My name is Louis Silverstein, and Bruce is actually my father. I would just like to say that I've known him my entire life, and I have never once observed him harassing or treating anyone unfairly. All he has ever done in my entire life or observation has asked for people to be accountable to what they do, say, and are asked to do. I have also heard allegations this evening of him saying, of people saying that he has name-called. I would love, in writing, to see any of these things materialized. Because again, I've known this man for 35 years of my life. I have never once heard him call names of somebody, denigrate them, or be anything but respectful, but holding them accountable. So if anybody that has spoken tonight that has said that he has called them names, I urge you to please publish it, because otherwise it is nothing but hearsay. I, I just, I find all of this unbelievably fascinating because it just seems like I'm watching high school politics. I think that the city of Malibu voted, there was an election, there is protocol. And the fact that it is not being respected, just, it just looks to me like national politics on a smaller scale. And, you know, I know that when the next election happens, people of Malibu will speak. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Bruce, I see your hand name raised.
What a shock. Louis, thank you so much. That meant more to me than anything I've heard from anyone else. Not that I don't appreciate everyone who spoke in my, in my support and in my favor and who'd been supportive for the past, over the past year.
Thank you, Bruce. If there's no other comments from the council, I'd like to open the nominations, open the floor for nominations. Karen, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Paul. I do have comments. The report by investigative attorney Leslie Ellis speaks for itself. Bruce Silverstein and/or his conduct is described by Ms. Ellis, as well as those interviewed, in the following terms: hostile, unprofessional, frequently aggressive, contentious, distrustful, unfriendly, challenging, disturbing, combative, burdensome, demanding, constant barrage, crackpot conspiracy theories, unrelenting, unprecedented, egregious, harsh, and critical. Those are not my words. Those are found throughout the report. While this behavior was not found to be within the legal description of gender-based harassment, it is classic bullying. There's a reason schools have anti-bullying policies and programs. Even children are trained to understand that people deserve to be treated civilly, including those we disagree with. A bully sends a message, even to those he or she does not target. It's a message of intimidation. What the bully is demonstrating is what he or she is capable of. And what is understood is that the object of that treatment is subject to change. This is not behavior that serves any organization well. I'm as sorry as anyone to see this city in its state of contention and dysfunction. And this is why I am unable to support Bruce Silverstein being elected mayor this evening.
Thank you, Karen. I see Steve's hand is raised. Would you like to make a nomination, Steve?
I'm gonna nominate Bruce Silverstein, and let's get over this tongue war, guys. This is like nuts.
Okay, council member Silverstein is nominated for mayor. Are there further nominations for mayor? I don't see any other hands.
I will nominate Steve Euring.
I now have a nomination for Steve Euring for mayor. Are there any other further nominations? There appear to be no further nominations, so I'm gonna close nominations and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mikey has his hand up.
I, wow. Need to make some comments here. This is, this is just, continues to be so disheartening to me. I have spent days thinking about being here at this moment and hearing the speakers. I hope the speakers on both sides can realize that it's just so, to me, I, no wonder it's hard to find people, good people to run for city council. Why would anyone want to be in the middle of this? It's horrifying. And I listen to the speakers, and thank you to all the speakers, but it's clear there's just no middle ground for anybody. We're just, it's just, it's really sad, you know? You, you know, whoever, whatever view you have, somebody else is corrupt. Somebody else is, you know, has no morale, no morals, lies, corruption. You know, somehow, I'm pro-development from several speakers. Thank you, Walter, John. I mean, I am, really? Okay, I had a whole thing written up to talk about, and I'm just gonna short-circuit because, I mean, I, I think we've all heard enough. This is- Because, I mean, I I think we've all heard enough. This is painful. I think the bigger point is, and I guess I'll speak right to you, Bruce. And how do we go forward? I mean, if, or how do we go forward right now with you as mayor with how just the amount of angst and passion on both sides it brings up, I've never, I've never been a part of anything like it. It's really unbelievable. It's crazy. It's overwhelming. It's amazing. So if we vote for you or don't vote for you, it's just World War III. Is that, is that what we want? I don't hear, I don't hear any middle ground and it's just really, it's gotta be just so disheartening to so many people. Well, I'll tell you this right now. I have no desire to be mayor instead of you, zero. So I'm just going to say it out loud now. I'm not going to be mayor at any point until after you are. Whatever power I'm after or whatever, it's not like that. But this is a mess. This, this is a giant mess and I I hope people on all sides can see it. This is, this is not right. I want you to be mayor. I just don't see how it makes sense now. This is, it's just creates World War III and and for all the reasons on both sides. So I'm going to just say everyone's right because I don't know what else to say. And that's where I land right now.
Thank you, Mikey. Steve, I think you're next, followed by Bruce.
My friends, Mikey wants to fix it. Mikey, the only people who are going to fix it are going to be us. We have engaged in a full-out tongue war, all right? And we do it anytime Bruce has got a chance to get some recognition. And that result of that tongue war you saw tonight, we've created the Hatfields and McCoys in our residents. They're feeding off this process that we're doing up here. It's our fault. It's our fault that we're acting like high school kids as opposed to sitting down and saying, look, our job is to is to get along and make this thing work. We, you know, how many meetings have we had since Paul got nominated mayor? And how many meetings have we been able to effectively work on issues? Get five O votes to get them done. Make, we demonstrated we can do that. And when it comes, it it comes to this, it comes to a group of people who are so upset that Riva got let go that they can't get over it. Sorry, she's gone. It's done. Right now, our job is to move forward, to take the community, get the community behind us. Make sure they understand that this process of fighting with each other is nuts. This is not what we were voted in to do. We've got enough issues to take care of without playing these high school games. So I encourage you all to sort of just take a deep breath, look inside and vote for the residents, not for us. He got the votes. He had more people speaking in his favor tonight than he had people speaking against him. You can listen to the minority and use that as your basis for making your decision. Or we can do the right thing and the right thing is to vote him in because that's what he deserves. Paul, go ahead.
Bruce has got his hand up, so Bruce is on.
You know, there's a, there's a famous movie, it's probably a book before that, Twelve Angry Men. Pretty much tonight, what you heard was twelve angry men and women. That was it, though. You heard twelve angry men and women. And we've got a city of six to eight thousand voters. And two thousand four hundred and fourteen of them voted for me and a little more than twelve not angry men and women came in and spoke on my behalf. Uh, but twelve angry men and women came in. Basically, you're saying, oh, that's the city. That represents the majority will of the city and that represents everyone out there. It doesn't, but if you want to play like that's the case, my guest, can't do anything about it. Any event, I'm not going to plead for um, what ought to be done, what's right, not going to ask you to do what's right. You know what's right, you know what's not right. Let's just vote.
I hear a call for the questions, so I believe it's appropriate to vote now. Kelsey, can you take the roll, please?
Yes, I I will call each council member's name and you should state the name of the council member you're voting for. There are two nominees, Bruce Silverstein and Steve Euring. Council member Fair.
Dave Euring.
Council member Pearson.
Steve Euring.
Council member Euring.
Bruce Silverstein.
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein.
I'm not going to vote on this.
You're abstaining from the vote?
I am.
And Mayor Grisanti?
Steve Euring.
Count, uh, council member Euring has been elected mayor.
Council member Euring is is declining that position. We've done this before, guys. When are we going to grow up? We've done this.
I I just, I feel like we're not hearing the combined group here and I know we've all
No, Mikey, what we're hearing is from, there were what, nine people who spoke against Bruce? And you're using that as a basis to to trash this guy.
I'm not trying to trash Bruce.
You are trashing him, Mikey. That whole process that says you got to do this because I want you to, look. He's got as much right to be mayor as anybody else. And and to not, I'm not taking this city council position because that's wrong. That's wrong to deny somebody the, what they've earned. And to, we're like back in high school. This is high school stuff, right? I don't like him, so I'm going to not vote for him. Even though he deserves it, he may be more more qualified than all of us to do this job and we're going to say, no, 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 I don't like him. There's nine people that spoke against him and they don't like him and I'm going to, I'm going to go with them, ignoring the people that did vote for him. Yeah, so however, I get to decline this position. I officially decline it.
It's twice you declined it. Bruce?
Yeah, so, um, you know, look, this is all an interesting kabuki theater charade because everyone knew coming into tonight that you're going to nominate and vote for Steve and Steve's going to decline. So you you graciously said you'll vote for Steve and you did. But you knew that wasn't going to fly because Steve's above it. He's a, he's a gracious guy and he's not going to stand for that. So that leaves Paul, Mikey, Karen. Paul's not going to take a second term in a row that you, I I couldn't imagine that. Mikey said he's not going to take a second one in twelve months and I wouldn't think he would. So it comes down to Karen, which is what I I mean, I gamed this out weeks ago. I've been talking to people. Everyone knows that's what's going to happen. Everyone I know, talk to, knows that's exactly where it's going and Karen will have to decide whether she's got the grace to turn it down or whether she'll vote for herself to change it. Let's vote.
Are you nominating Karen?
No, I'm not, but I'm sure one of you will. So go ahead.
Karen, I see your hand raised.
I'd guess, Bruce. I guess you've been taking bets on on what I'm going to do here.
No bets.
I'm I'm not interested in being mayor. I would like to nominate Paul.
And I would like to nominate Steve again and ask him to reconsider.
Thank you, Paul. It's not going to happen. Do the right thing. Do, take a deep breath. Do the right thing. Demonstrate to the community that we all have got some level of courage and honesty amongst us. And hopefully that will start changing this community, this comments that we get every meeting, right? We, we are, we have created the problem. We've created it and we continue to fuel it. So let's stop and let's just make this thing right.
Steve, do you think that the city will be happier with you as mayor or me?
I think the city will be happy with Bruce as mayor. That's what, that's what the city wants. Twenty-four hundred people said that's what they want. And and, you know, more people tonight said that's what they want. So who are we listening to?
Several people said you, they wanted you.
I understand, you know, that that'll come. That will come. That will come and it's time.
I think the time is now.
I don't think it is. I think it's time for us to demonstrate to the community that we're adults, that we can work together. That we're not going to, we're not going to deal high school politics and use that to, look, we have got more stuff to do in this city you can shake a stick at with. All right, and instead of working on that, we're playing this high school. This is crazy. I didn't join the city council to play this kind of stuff. I joined this to to try and do something right for the city.
I was hoping you joined it to be the mayor at some point.
Some point. Not that, this is not that some point.
Well, I'm in a corner, aren't I? So let's call
You're actually only in a corner if you make it your corner.
You're in a corner, just going to test your character, Paul. That's the corner you're in.
Steve, you've you've refused it.
You're going to test, this is going to test your character, Paul. So just be aware of that. When you, whatever decision you make, this is a test of your character. So go ahead.
You're not, you're not actually helping here. Do you know that? I mean, this is just, you're just another symptom of the infighting that's going on.
Oh, Mikey, come on. You know, look, I have not been, I have not called anybody names. I have not fought with each other, okay? I've not done that for a whole year and a half I've been on the city council. So don't take me to that path. I wanted, I think our job is to do, is to demonstrate to the community that we can work together, that we're adults. That we're going to, we're going to do the things that we have to do to move the city forward and let this petty tongue war that we're having go away someplace else. That's what I think.
So is electing someone that's obviously so controversial, the way to do that, that's my only point. I want Bruce to be mayor. I don't see that the city is ready and certainly not from what I heard this weekend and and from the input I'm getting.
Who, who in the city says we're not ready, Mikey? Who are the people that are telling you?
All right.
We have a motion. Can we move ahead, please?
All right. Kelsey, will you call the roll, please?
Wait a minute, we 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 haven't agreed to call the question and I'm not even sure there was a motion.
There was. Well, yes, there's two nominations on the floor right now. What would you like to say, Bruce?
I would like to say, this is the last thing I'm going to say about this. Everything that was rehashed tonight, everything that people came in and complained about is about what happened during the election and in the first two months or three months of the term. Uh, the investigation went on, the two, two investigations went on after that, but nothing changed on the ground. There was no further problems that were being asserted or being investigated. Uh, so, you know, yeah, you got this report. People can disagree as to whether it exonerated me or excuriated me. But it's a report about things that happened a year ago. And to the best of my knowledge, people aren't saying those things are happening now. They're not saying they've been happening for the past six months. Um, same thing with the Jefferson Wagner piece. That occurred in December of last year. I'm sorry, not December, last year, December of a year and a, of the year before last. And nothing's changed since then that's been new. So you've got a bunch of people who are just holding on to their anger and can't let it go. And I guess it was stoked by a new report. Um, as I've told Mikey, I I'm not a person that believes in looking back with regret or resentment for things that happened in the past. Because the past is the past and the past was shaped by all the events that were occurring at that time. I've been asked to apologize. I'm not going to apologize for what I did for the same reason that I don't look back and regret it or resent it. But I'm not proud of that report. If anyone thinks I'm proud that the Ellis report came back and says I was hostile and unprofessional. Um, I don't know where they would get that from. I've never suggested that and I'm not proud of it. I don't agree with the conclusion, but I'm not proud of that conclusion. I've learned a lot in the last year and I think I've exhibited that over the past three to six months as a number of the people who spoke on my behalf have said. Uh, so I I really just don't get this. I, again, there's, 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 Steve said it was nine people. I thought it was twelve people, but there's a bunch of people who come and they complain about things that are ancient history at this point, water over the dam. And you're going to make decisions based on that? So I, if there's a motion, I didn't realize there was a motion. But I guess if there's a motion now, I'm I'm done speaking and I'm ready to have the question called.
There's two nominations on the floor. Kelsey, will you take the roll again?
Yes, as I understand it, there are two nominations for Paul Grisanti and Steve Euring as mayor. Again, I'll call each council member's name and you should state the name of the person you're voting for. Council member Fair.
Paul Grisanti.
Council member Pearson.
Paul.
Council member Euring.
Bruce Silverstein.
Council member Euring, Bruce Silverstein was not a nominee in this round.
And I'm abstaining.
And Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein?
If these are the choices, I'm voting for Steve Euring.
And Mayor Grisanti?
Well, I'm tempted to vote for Steve Euring and then beg him to change his mind. Is that possible? Is that one of the options?
You can vote for Council member Euring. At that point, it would be a split vote.
I'm going to vote for Steve Euring.
Okay, and with that, uh, the vote is two-two, so the motion fails. And you should open the floor for nominations again.
The floor is now open for nominations for mayor.
I'll nominate Bruce Silverstein.
Thank you, Steve.
I nominate Paul Grisanti.
We have any other nominations? I'm going to close the, Steve, your hand is raised?
I'm sorry, Paul, was my nomination heard? I'm not sure.
Your nomination was heard.
Thank you.
Currently, we have nominations for Bruce Silverstein and Paul Grisanti. Can we call the roll, please?
Council member Fair.
Paul Grisanti.
Council member Pearson.
People are in the theater of the absurd right about now.
We are.
I mean, is there a point where we just, we call, I'm called or something? It's a deadlock?
Vote, please.
Who are the nominees again?
Me or Bruce?
I'll vote for you, Paul.
Thank you. Steve, I believe you're next. Is that correct?
Bruce Silverstein.
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein?
I'll vote for myself this time.
I'm going to vote for myself. So we, I am the next mayor.
Yes.
Congratulations, Paul.
I'll make a motion for Bruce for mayor pro tem.
Mayor, uh, Grisanti, we do have public comment for the election of the mayor pro tem if you're ready to hear that.
Certainly. Mr. Sampson, are you available?
I am. Steve said it correctly, Paul. You painted yourself into a corner. You showed your utter lack of character. Thank you.
Mr. Embry, are you available?
Yeah, it's very, it's very disappointing to see the council not respect the city's processes and procedure and choosing to politicize this and open it up to the public discord and try to, I don't know, hold the the last election over again? It's a demonstration of power is what three votes are doing. It's quite clear. It's not that you want to do the right thing. It's that you see you can do what you can get away with and you just did it. And you, you did it before last time, too. So, you know, the public's watching and can see this. In fact, the public's been watching Bruce and knows that what you just did was just for show. It's, there was no substance behind it. Sorry, Mikey. But, I mean, look at the last nine months, as I said previously. You're not going to agree on everything, I know that. But you've been able to respectfully work through the issues of the city. And so for Mikey in particular, how disappointing for you to defer to the loud mouths uh, who are obviously brought into this meeting, not the ones who come to the meetings on a regular basis and contribute, but the ones that like to get politically involved because I guess the election just started. I I could go on, but I think everybody knows what kind of a joke this has been so far, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Alexander, are you available?
Yes, uh, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I just had to say, Paul, just the fact that you would actually consider yourself the mayor when it's so clearly Bruce's spot. I mean, it's actually embarrassing. The way you guys are conducting yourself, I think Steve describes it as high school. This is exactly how my student council was ran because they didn't want the most popular person to be the president of the student council. And this is the same thing. Bruce is qualified for this. You know that you were wasting so much time and energy going back and forth, voting meticulously in a way that you know that the outcome is going to end up in your favor because Steve is not going to take it. And you know that that Mikey and and Karen, they're all cowards. And you know who the biggest coward happens to be? The person that would sit there and then accept it when you know that that is not your position. So I don't even mean this personally. This is a person that I don't even know you from Adam's. This is my first night actually finding out about the Malibu city politics. And it is such an embarrassment. Every single person, when they put their head on the pillow tonight, they should be so embarrassed that this is how they conduct city business with city time, doing these personal things, these false allegations on a man that was cleared. On a position that won't even be held along, long enough to even make a huge difference. But because you guys are egomaniacs and what is more important is your personal feelings than that of the city. And so that is what the problem is, is because as an elected politician, you serve the people. The people don't serve you, Paul, but you guys can't understand that, Mickey. Uh, you, you guys, we don't serve y'all. Y'all serve us. Look in the mirror tonight. Who are you serving tonight by doing this high school, junior high charade kabuki theater like Bruce said? And listen, Bruce is not a perfect guy, but if you just, if you just judge him on his moral character tonight based on yours, Bruce is a shining star. And Paul, you as the mayor, you should be the one spearheading, let, voting for Bruce, letting him in, but you won't do that because you think that you deserve to have the say. And that shows that you're choosing your ego instead of the interest of the true citizens of Malibu. So one day, you are going to soon realize how embarrassing this was and how a person like you that has, I guess, would try to consider himself as to having high moral character to have this public embarrassment and just to do this live on YouTube, on whatever, this is going to go out forever. That you will just be a public embarrassment for the citizens of Malibu when we have real issues. We have crises in our neighborhoods, but you guys want to sit here and create false crises. So you can sit here and go back and forth all day. Yeah, we have a deadly virus where people are dying. We have issues with our roads. We have issues that are actually important. But once again, your egos take a driver's seat and your mentality is to But once again, your egos take a driver's seat and your mentality is to put the people second. And you put yourself in front of us. And I remind you once again, as an elected official, your job is to serve us.
That's your time.
Thank you, Alexander. Hi, Joe, are you available?
Hi, yes. I mean, this is just wrong. Mikey, you said that Bruce is too controversial to be voted as mayor, but it's you three who have made him controversial. You, Karen and Paul have called constituents conspiracy theorists. It's embarrassing, exactly what Alexander said. This is just a ceremonial position. There is no power, but it makes a statement. I think, Paul, you should step down as mayor. That's the only way to regain your character and stop wasting time, and yes, create all these false crises. You are putting the residents, we the residents, second. It's true, and it's, it's not right what you're doing to Bruce. He's, he is a man of character. He's shown it tonight, and I don't, I do not know why you guys just can't make him be mayor. I just don't understand it. It's frustrating. It's very upsetting. It's very upsetting, especially on Valentine Day. It's just no love. There's no love. I don't know what's going on. It's very upsetting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Hi, Scott, are you available?
You guys blew it. It's really disheartening. You had, I guess, nine people. The usual suspects, some of whom ran for city council and lost hating on Bruce. And I, when I, when I look at Karen speaking, because I can see her, you all can't see me, the public can't see me. Karen, you, you, you looked so unhappy up there, so bitter. And I don't think you've gotten over, uh, getting rid of Riva. Now, I think Riva should have been gone when she stood with the fire department chief Osby and said what a great job they did, and, you know, she got booed for it. Uh, we lost houses. And, uh, but she sided with them, and they blew it. We all know that and we'll see. But y'all like her, that's okay. We can have different opinions on that. But what happened tonight, for those of us sitting at home watching on Zoom, was horrendous. And it's so sad that you would take that position, Mikey. You waffled. You said nice things, but you waffled. You did. And, I mean, I get, Karen, you really don't like Bruce. Fair enough. That's okay. Um, Paul, you shouldn't have taken the position. Uh, it's, it's really, really disheartening what happened tonight. And, uh, you know, I don't know how we come out of this. Oh, one other thing. A couple of the speakers said, you know, Riva left, no, good members of the staff left. Well, of course they left. She brought them in, they were tied to her, and so they left. What I've seen with staff, however, those not involved with planning, um, who are just overwhelmed. But with the rest of the staff, as once Riva left, suddenly it was a lot more relaxed. And because she was trying to micromanage everything, there was a lot of problems with Riva that you guys failed to recognize. But I'm sorry, you made a bad, bad decision. Bruce deserves it. He's shown his character. You might not like what he did in getting rid of Riva, but half of that was on her because she attacked him as well. But since then, you have gotten along. Oh, you forgot that. So you canceled him. Sorry to hear that, but thanks.
Are you here, John?
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, as everybody said, you blow it. Paul came in third, all distant third, because he was the, the other candidates were too weak to beat him because he was weak, but they were weaker. And now he's been, he's gonna be mayor for eighteen months out of the two years. It makes no sense at all. None of the public, except for the toadies, agree with this. It was set up at the beginning of the meeting when Lloyd Ahern said, oh, let's nominate Steve, because everybody knew he wasn't gonna take it. Everybody knew you weren't gonna vote for Bruce. Everybody knew that candidates, well, they didn't know for sure, but the candidates that are running wouldn't take it. So, hey, let's pick, it's all arranged. Let's have Paul. The, the citizens want reputational democracy. This is not what's going on in Washington, except you've turned it into that. This is exactly what's going on in Washington. And if it follows through, when, when the anti-development, pro-general plan people win next election, do you want them to say, okay, let's have a February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two committee and put them on it? Do they want, do you want them to take everybody off any political assignment or, or committee that's on the wrong side? It makes no sense. You're continuing a problem that's been going on, it will have been going on for two years, and you're gonna make it four years, because you're gonna lose. The city knows that you pulled a sleazy move here. It is high school. And if you think you're gonna win by playing high school, let Paul stay as mayor. Let him stay. I would really doubt if Steve, uh, accepts mayor pro temp, which is what you'll try to do, try to do. Then all of a sudden, it'll be Mikey or Karen, okay? Everybody knows what's happening here. And the public knows, and the election, and you're on video, it's gonna be all over the election that you denied the voters the ability to have their own mayor. And that's exactly what you're doing tonight, and you've done it twice. And we are citizens. You work for us, and when you put yourself in front of it and your egos get in the way, you deserve to be gone, period, gone. And Paul, if you don't decline this position, you're a fool. Sorry to say that, but you've ruined the city. We don't have that much time to fix it. Thank you.
Hi, Craig, are you available?
Yes, I am. Good evening, council and staff and everybody. Um, I feel like we've gone through some sort of time warp or something. I, most of the past year, you guys have been working really well together. It seemed like you put a lot of this behind you. Bruce has learned some things. You guys have learned a lot about law from him. Um, you're getting things done, and suddenly all this stuff is, has been hashed up again out of the past. Um, and I, I just feel like if, Paul, if you continue and, and, and accept what you've just accepted um, a couple of things. It's, one, you're gonna have a majority of the city feeling like the government is illegitimate. And I don't know what the consequences of that may be for the next year until the election. Um, two, you've just altered the potential outcome of the election because you just stirred up a lot of ire uh, among the people that, uh, you know, I think that you might prefer to see in those seats. And, you know, I just find this profoundly disappointing because this should be about public service, not personal ego. So, uh, please do the right thing. Thank you.
And Mayor, I have checked, I don't see any of the people we missed earlier in the meeting, and I don't see any raised hands from the public, so that concludes public comment.
I had nominated Bruce for Mayor Pro temp when we changed course.
Yes, if you're ready, you can open the floor for nominations for me.
I'll open the nominations for Mayor Pro temp, and I hear a nomination from Mikey Pearson. We just got the order a little wrong.
Right. Nominate Bruce for Mayor Pro temp.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for Mayor Pro temp? Kelsey, will you call the roll?
I'm sorry, there was a raised hand. Are you ready for me to call the roll, Mayor?
Where was the raised hand? I'm sorry. It's Bruce.
Surprise, surprise. Mikey, appreciate the nomination. Um, better, I guess second's better than first, but, I mean, I was, second, second is better than nothing. But, uh, thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any other nominations? Kelsey, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Uring.
Uh, Bruce Silverstein.
Mayor Proton Silverstein.
Sure.
Mayor Grisanti.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alex, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. Okay, so guys, I'm here. So a little bit about myself, my name's Alexander Stein. They call me Primetime ninety-nine Alex Stein, and I'm somewhat of a comedic lobbyist. I, you know, I go triple viral, I file all these videos, and what I do normally is I call into these meetings and I troll stuff. And I say outlandish stuff, like I'm HIV positive, or like that I've had, you know, gay sex with like politicians. If I say crazy stuff, no, no, listen, listen, I'm not gonna say that, listen. Normally, I say this wild stuff, and I try to troll these elected officials. But what I saw tonight was such a public embarrassment, nothing that I could say or do, no words that I can even correspond with my mouth would be more of a representation of an embarrassment. And let me tell you something, this is true. I lost my mother this year to COVID nineteen. That is a hundred percent true. I watched her, she died in my arms. She was given remdesivir. We told the doctors not to give her remdesivir at Baylor Hospital in Dallas, Texas. She died six days later. Let me tell you something, watching her die was the hardest thing I ever experienced in my whole entire life. It's actually toughened me up, and I, I, even though I can't really feel joy, i- it was just an experience that has toughened me up. I know that I'll never face anything harder that, than that in my entire life. But the second, and, and other than watching my mom turn gray in my arms, the second worst humiliation I've ever seen in my life was tonight. And I'm not saying that, I'm not mincing my words, and I'm not saying that as some sort of metaphor. The, just the way that the representation of these politicians, you guys call yourselves elected politicians. And for you to come here and act the age of children, shows that this is why the world is so messed up. Because the people that we put in charge still cannot even check their ego at the door for, for five minutes. When they know that this is a ceremonial position, at the end of the day, that this cohesive team would work better, and the problem is even the double speak. The people say, oh, I would want you to be mayor. Oh, I know you're voted more, but I'm still not gonna vote for you. And the fact is, the biggest coward of them, all I have to say is Bruce for even accepting the mayor pro temp position sadly. And this is me as a troll, because a real man would even step down. Everybody should step down. And I, listen, guys, I'm Alexander Stein. I go to meetings all day long. I talk to the House legislature. I go to all, all different states. And, and just the fact that you guys would participate, and it's the only person that was honorable tonight was Steve by turning down a position, which that's what Bruce should have done, is turn down the position. But of course, he's, he's not gonna do that because he knows it would just be another game, and then it would just be Mickey or it'd just be Karen, it would just be another, um, uh, uh, red tape politician getting it by default. But remember, guys, when you take a position by default, that is a participation trophy. That is not earned. That is what a coward accepts. A real human being has to, we live in what is called a meritocracy. You earn stuff on merit. You're not given to it and voted in a three to two vote by people that are elected to represent people that they don't represent whatsoever, and you spend hours and hours and hours, and I have hours of time.
Thank you for your time, Alex.